Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our city council meeting on Monday, November the 4th, 2019 at 7:05 PM. Mr. Terry, if you could call the board, please.
Yes, I see Brown.
Here.
Tucker.
Here.
Rockow.
Here.
David.
Here.
That's very nice. But it is a board.
Thank you. If you would all rise, please, at this time, and we will begin our meeting with a prayer from Lynn Boplin, our Greenwood United Methodist founder, and then followed by our pledge of allegiance by Chief Lord Lawson.
All right, let's bow our heads, please. God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us the spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Lord, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. We ask your blessings on the people who have been called to lead our community in which we live, work, and play. I ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern, a sense of the welfare and true need of our people, the keen thirst for justice and righteousness, the ability to work together in harmony, personal peace in their lives, and joy in their paths. I pray for the agendas set before them today. Please give them an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Greenwood. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May you see him. Thank you back. At this time, I would ask the council, if you not had an opportunity, to take a look at the few minutes from our September 9th council meeting and ask for approval.
I'll make a motion of approval, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, gentlemen. Your motion of second?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
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 Thank you. And at this time, in your, our agendas are recognitions and acknowledgements, and I have a very special one to give tonight, and unfortunately, I'm not the actual presenter, but I'm going to stand in tonight. I've already recognized this young man for the city, and I was honored and blessed to be at his Eagle Scout, what's that called again? Quarter of honor, thank you very much, scout. And so I would ask Joshua Taylor to come to the front, please, the podium. Mr. Taylor, if you don't know, is the son, come on up here. We're going to make fun of you for a little while. No, I'm not going to. Dr. Taylor is his mom, who is a high clinic here in town. I'm not sure what, Mr. Taylor.
I'm a retired dentist.
Retired dentist, okay, awesome. And then this little guy, your brother.
Most days are fine.
Do what?
Most days are fine.
Most days, okay, I got you. All right, so, Mr. Taylor performed his Eagle Scout project, and it was across, it's actually literally across the street from us. It's the signage for the hyster- his, not hysterical, historical area over there, and it's very, very fine looking sign, and did a wonderful job. I claimed a little part of it myself, because I stopped there one day to get my picture made, and I handed them a rock as if I was working, so I got my picture made. But the fault, if one rock calls it, it's probably the one that I had anything to do with. So, actually, this is from Representative, say Representative Lee Johnson, who was not able to be here tonight, he was not able to get back from Little Rock, but I want to read this to you in the crowd, and we'll hand out a few little pictures, if that's okay. This citation, Joshua Dennis Taylor, whereas Boy Scouts of America has instilled in thousands of young men the principles of strong character, good citizenship, and committed service to God and country. Whereas Mr. Joshua Dennis Taylor, with discipline and hard work, exemplifies these principles in through his actions and dedication, has earned his highest rank in scouting, Eagle Scout. And whereas Mr. Taylor restored the Greenwood Historical Society's sign for his Eagle Scout project, a thoughtful way to support his community, and whereas Mr. Taylor's journey along the path to Eagle Scout would not have been possible without the continuing support of Scout Master Misty Rethan, is that right? Trued in 1989, his family, of course, friends and community. And whereas the House of Representatives of the 92nd General Assembly of the State of Arkansas takes great pride in recognizing Mr. Joshua Dennis Taylor on his outstanding achievement and wishes him the best in future endeavors, now therefore present to the motion of Representative Lee Johnson, the Arkansas House of Representatives directs that this citation be presented on this fourth day of November, 2019. So, congratulations, sir. We're proud of you. I think we need to get one of the family over here, if that's okay? And I'm not getting out of the picture, if that's what you're wondering. I'll let you go there, Dad, and I'll get down here and win. Actually, I'll just stand right here, you know. I do want to.
All right, ready?
All right, thank you very much, congratulations. You got it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I heard you shared your husband, Candy.
I didn't, I didn't.
Proud of you, thank you very much. We talked about this before, Greenwood would not be Greenwood without all these scout projects. You can, you don't have to look very far to see these scout projects all over town. Thank you, guys.
We've got homework to do.
Okay. Okay. Also, this evening, and I don't have, I think that Candy, in fact, I meant to get something off of her desk a couple earlier today. Yeah, yeah. Miss Sammy Riley was recognized at our recent Chamber of Commerce banquet, Shining Star, I believe is what it's called, so with her outstanding volunteerism and all she does for the city of Greenwood, is our Parks Director, and she was doing all these, not everything that she does, I assure you, comes under the title of Parks Director, although many things do. So, it was pretty cool, and those things have been recognized through Congressman Womack's office, and I just want to say thank you very much for what you do. In fact, I'm going to stand up and give you a... Speech, speech.
Yeah. Thank you for letting me do what I do.
Okay, so, and also, just at this time, I'm only going to say too, I think the, I'm not sure what we call it anymore, the Trail of Candy or whatever it is, the Trail of Tooth Decay or whatever, was moved because of supposedly pending cold, cold plus rain weather, that was moved. We do that in conjunction with the school, and that was moved up to the HB Stewart Arena, and it was very nice and pleasant, went up without a hitch. I will say, say this publicly, I know we have some firemen up here, but there was a dance-off between the, what's the dog over there called, which else?
Sparky.
Sparky and the police dog, which is named?
Safety Pub.
Safety Pub, Safety Pub, one hands down, I'm sorry. I witnessed, I witnessed the dance-off, and it was cool to watch those guys work together.
Sparky was country this week, didn't he?
Oh, I see, y'all guys. Always an excuse, isn't it? Anyway, it was, it was a green event, a lot of kids up there, I know they did that in the safe confines of the HB Stewart Arena, so thank you to all that participated in that and helped. Committee reports. It's our special guy at the boys' girls' club, I know Kenny's here. Nothing going on out at the club, all right?
Nothing at all. Nothing at all. Getting to the end of the year, and it's getting busier and busier. We're doing, starting basketball cheerleading sign-ups, we found that today. The whole school program, they have their own basketball teams over there, they're going to start coming in on Friday nights and playing to our teams, so we're going to bring them down from Fort Smith and everything. Soccer season's going, we'll have another three, four weeks, hopefully it'll be dry a few of those weeks. It's getting a cold a lot sooner than it has the last five years, so it's getting cold. After-school going great, being over 100 kids a day, we're feeding every one of them that walks through the door. We had a Halloween costume party dance, ended on through six, great turnout, somewhere between 100 and 150 kids. We are, and I didn't put this in here, but we're having our father-daughter dance the Friday before Greenwood wins state football. We have a carriage, a horse and carriage coming out of Little Rock, that's going to come out there. I might be calling on some of y'all to be standing in, dads, if all possible. It's a great time, everybody has a good time. I think the mayor had a couple of good times until one time his date left him, she wouldn't have had a lot more fun. So, it's a great time, we have dads coming in from Oklahoma, Texas, Mississippi coming in, that never get to see their kids for whatever reason, and the first year we had it really went off really good, and then all of a sudden, we started getting phone calls from all these dads saying, her stepdad is staying here. We had a lot of requests for, moms wanted to bring their sons, so that is also available. So, it's just a great family outing, we have food for them to eat, like I said, we've got Cinderella carriage with horses, white horses, going to give a little carriage ride around there, pictures, we give them free pictures, so it's a great time for all. Also, our 10,000 strong fundraiser is going great, I think we're about 3,200 different people, almost 33 have donated something, you know, penny, nickel, dollar, whatever, but we're really trying to get the whole community behind us, and that is going to bring. I was going to wear my LSU stuff since LSU Alabama, but then I remembered it was a budget time, so go Hogs. Without the support of the city, I don't know where we'd be. I say it all the time, without y'all, we'd be, one door would be closed, and the other one would be getting closer. We appreciate it. If you come out, if you haven't been out there the last six months, please stop by. The improvements that you've done with the buildings, the new roofs, the painting, you know, fence on there, the A&amp;P Commission really helped us out big time with the set of bleachers and the top for the fence, and we can say enough thanks to them. That's about it, unless you want to volunteer to rep basketball, which most of y'all have been out there. No, we've not yet. We've already had a ban in the one side. Does anybody have any questions for us?
Did you have a date for that, end of that father-daughter dance?
I want to say it's December 6th. The state championship, I believe, is the 7th, it's that Saturday, and we moved it to that Friday, it's the 5th to 6th. Don't have that off the top, I didn't talk about that. But it's a, it's a winner, one lamb, decorate the whole place, and like I said, it's a great time, and we're already starting a list of mostly grandparents who are asking if we can find somebody to agree with their son or daughter.
Let me know if it's somebody really in, you know, the bottom of the barrel, I realize, if you need me.
Well, the best thing for you is blind date, so it's your show.
That's perfect. We don't tell her it's me, because you want to know it.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Candy, appreciate your work out there. SRCA, I'm not sure if Lisa came by with one, no? Okay. Again, if you need information, and we reached out to Lisa and her boss today to remind her that we've not got her report in a couple of months, so we should be getting some very quickly. Parks Commission, Mr. Bernstein is here.
Councilor, have a report in front of you, just want to mention a few things. Just be aware we have placed some small children playground equipment up at Asa the Leaves, and it's really cute, it's really nice, a little nice. All the parks have been mulched, great looking. The park up on Little Rock Playground have been mulched, and they look terrific, and a good chance, just take a look. We just had a cross-country track meet on our public playground, and just letting you know that the park is being used extensively. We had a, clicking into this, the water playground, wheelchair accessible swing, where you can take that wheelchair and just go over it and test it, and I just noticed the other end ran 2,500, estimated cost would be about $2,600. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Also, I know, I think, I know you're worried, Joe, I think the money that was given in memory of my dad when he passed, that has been, I think, around 2,500 or so, so that money is available also toward the same type of project, if the Parks Commission says they want another little swing or something to go with it, that's handicap acceptable.
Accessible.
Accessible, thank you very much. We want to kind of get into that too, so. Or wish for our commission, if you'd like to, anything for us?
We're finalizing our budget, and I'll have that be all pretty soon. We're looking to transition to a process where we design most of our projects a year ahead. This year, we funded a lot of projects, and we sent them in, the plug fit, and engineers we understand, and we had one of them 50 years ago, and we wanted one working out for everyone, people here, and that kind of happened to our engineer, and they started designing projects from Albury, and of course, moving the place a lot bad. So, we had a lot of projects going to be carried over next year, but to cut down that to the future, we're going to go to more designing one year ahead, and so if only half the designing money gets spent, we'll have 25,000 unspent versus, you know, 100,000 unspent. So, we're going to transition to that. So, next year, we have a lot of projects carried over from this year. We are going to expand a sewer upgrade in Indian Hills area, that's Greenwood's busiest biggest septic system in dry weather, and biggest drainage drain in wet weather, so leaky, so we're going, we're replacing a lot of pipe in there. We had a small section supposed to be funded this year to replace some pipe in there, we're going to expand that, do a little more, not all of it, a little more done next year. Our first one we're going to design here ahead is probably going to be a new water line. We took a water line out that ran from Water Tank Field down the middle of town a couple of years ago, it was 50 to 70 years old, very leaky, and we did that, we lost the whole supply line. Right now, we have eight-inch going toward from Water Tank, the Water Tanks, Mount Harvey Road, where that northern school is, or southern school, I should say, and then a six-inch down Highway 10, that six-inch is totally too small for what we need for, so we're going to be designing next year to get a bigger line in there, funding construction in 2021. I met with our engineer a couple of weeks ago and expressed our hopes to get more progress on our different projects, and he said they were high caught up on all the flood damage, and thought we had some more work to finish, but some of the projects that we funded for this year are probably ready to go early, early next year. Been a bad year for water sales this year, wet years, and they'll sell much, you sell less water, I don't say much, you sell less, and so it's been a down year for our water and sewer revenue, and that's hurt our debt coverage a little bit. There's three costs to cures, one's high sewer rates, second is payoffs and debt we have been during 2022, paid off early next year, a couple of years ahead, that would put us probably over 200% debt coverage versus the 110 we're supposed to be at, so it would kind of fix things. Our third would be refinance the older debt to eliminate that covenant, that'd be a little expensive, but that is a possibility. And finally, I need to meet with you, I met with USDA Linder about that, and I'm going to need you to tell you what, what we discussed. Ongoing projects, we have two ongoing, Highway 71 and Denver Street, the sewer and water extensions on the east side of Highway 71 are pretty much finished. We've got to do some earthwork and fix the road on that side, and then we got to bore underneath 71 over to the west side of 71 for the water line. We also have a sewer upgrade, Highway 10 and Railroad east of town, and that upgrade's nearing completion, should be finished by year end. And this was asked last time, it's going to be an update, and I won't mention this one again until we hear something, but James Fort Negotiator's still waiting, they're probably not going to come back to us until they, their board is met, so they'll have an approved price, and their board will maybe, maybe to the time of year, so probably be a few months before we hear anything, might be early next year. Any questions?
I had a guy, I dropped him off at his house the other night, a couple of weeks ago, and he stepped out of a vehicle, and it almost sunk, and there was some, a leak or something in his front yard, I don't know where's he went at. Ridge Crest Drive. I don't know his address.
That's okay, I'll know later, okay.
He's right by, he has his mailbox, it's a big dirt area, he was, and he went deep in his nice Schenze boots, he never come back to the football game a couple of Fridays ago, anyway, I thought about basketball. There was some work done, I think it was a, how long was the leak, or anyway, yeah.
Perfect. Did you know that the water sewer could be the one?
No, I don't know.
Okay.
Is that where there was an issue a week or so ago? Okay.
This was two weeks ago, probably, maybe two months ago, I don't know, but it was just a bit of rain, and obviously, he stepped out of the rain, and I don't know his address, John Taylor. On the curve there, it was down from, I don't know, the, yeah. Come off 96, we got Ridge Crest Loop up there, there's the second house on the right.
Okay. Well, they can do it. Anything else?
I don't think so. Thank you. Appreciate you, John. This time is our citizen forums section of our agenda, and we have a number on that has signed up. If anybody needed to sign up, let's still do that, or acknowledge, this is not going to work online. Financial report, Mr. Marsh. Oh, sorry. I got him.
You got me doing some.
I got him, the other dude over there, sorry.
I'm multitasking, I'm multitasking. I'll be back. Does anybody want to speak in citizen forum?
All night, sir.
Okay.
I can tell you, Joe, Paul.
No.
Okay, they don't want to.
Okay, first thing on page one, which is the city sales and use tax. We are up for the year 2%, it's down from 2.3% of the previous month's cumulative. We have a five-year average growth of 3.4%, but right now, we're 1.5% below our five-year average growth. The good news is it is growing, it's just not as robust as we used to have, and I projected about a 2.5% increase in city sales and use tax over last year's numbers. Looks like that, that might be an optimistic goal, I don't know, we only have two more months left. Actuals in order to see where we end up the year, but it does look like it's going to be well below our five-year average in city sales and use tax. As far as the county sales and use tax is concerned, we are up 1% compared to 1.6% of 2018 year-over-year cumulative. That is consistent with the previous month, we were at, we're just staying at 1% right now. That is 1.1% below our five-year average growth of 2.1% over the last five years, so we're still retracting a little bit lower than the county sales tax as well. And if you were to go to, on the next, I usually will point out some things on the balance sheet, but what I really want to tell you this time is, we are completing the water sewer audit, we should have that, our final report back to us sometime in the next couple of weeks, he's doing the final touches on it now. And the legislative audit had some audit review notes that they had to clear, they are clearing those right now, we've responded to them with some more information, and we anticipate an exit interview with them probably in the next couple of weeks as well. So, we'll have both the water sewer audit completed for the 2018 fiscal year, as well as the legislative audit for the 2018 fiscal year, and we'll be reporting on those either in the December meeting or the January meeting, depending on when to get those final reports. For your statement of revenues and expenditures, I have listed them all out by categories and by individual departments. The bottom line for this is that we are $907,000 ahead of, well, it's basically a surplus. We budgeted for the year $2.7 million deficit, mostly coming from capital expenditures, primarily in the water sewer department and in parks. I will tell you that, I have some numbers, we are $2 million in projects that are currently in progress, that are not reported there. If you would have looked on all your capital updates, I will tell you that we have spent so far in 10 months, 1.1 million, we budgeted to spend 5.4 million. So, we're about $4.3 million away from where our expected expenditures were for 2020, so I'm going to break that down for you. There's $2 million in projects right now that are currently in works in progress, all the expenses have not come in, and there's $2.3 million, or approximately that much, in projects that are being carried over into the 2020 projects, so they won't, they won't even be affecting our 2019 expenditures and our fund balances. They're being actually moved into the 2020 year. A lot of that had to do with architectural design, professional fleet delays in designing projects, and certain projects that are taking longer to get started than we anticipated. So, that's the income, the revenues and expenditures, and I don't want to take up a lot of time. I will tell you that on the cash flow, right now, we have a cash, net increase in cash of $536,000 over our previous, but like I said, most of that is, our cash isn't being spent on projects that we anticipated right now, so our fund balances are growing. If you look at page 13 and 14, you'll, on your report, you'll see a complete breakdown of all the fund balances we have in the city. We currently are sitting at $11,695,000, a lot of those are restricted accounts. I've already got what's restricted, what's not, by each of the eight funds that we have. I'll be budgeted to have a fund balance of 10 million, so we're about 1.6 million ahead of our fund balance for what we anticipated based on our budget to be, two months left in the year report.
You're saying that'll catch up in 2020?
We're moving it up $2.3 million right now, as the budgets are getting ready to be presented to you. I have the ability now to see what they're budgeting, and what they're moving, and what's carried over, what projects are not going to be even started this year, and they're being moved into next year, and what portions of projects that are in 2019 that have already started that are not being completed until 2020. So, we're looking at about $2.3 million moving into next year's budgets. It's committed money, it's just going to be next year, when we spend it.
Any questions for Mr. Marsh? Well, as far as you're saying, if, you know, we're short, or we're under the five-year average, you know, as far as taxes and stuff, you know, does that mean by the last that we need to still do flat, or do we need to be a little bit more austere, you know, than that?
No, I think flat is a very conservative approach. I think we should budget last year's revenues, because if you go and look at the page one, I think it is, you'll see in the far right-hand column, you'll see all the averages of year over year, and you'll see we have peaks and valleys, it ebbs and flows, it goes up and down. The overall weighted average for those five years, the last five years, was 3.4%. We know that very well, because we're looking at bond issues right now, and we're looking, and we're focusing in on what is our potential average growth over a certain period of time. So, while this year may be a down year, it doesn't mean all the years are going to be down, because you've got to remember, it is an increase, 2%, it's not like we're declining that city sales and use tax, we're just not growing it as rapidly this year as we have in previous years. So, again, everything seems to be somewhat of an anomaly this year, and I think that what we have in the planning department, and what we have in the works right now indicates to me that we'll, we'll definitely maintain, I don't see us dropping, but I really think that we'll have some, some growth next year in the city sales and use tax, just based on future projects.
So, we put that down low. So we put that down low.
I've been pretty close so far in what I've, I think, our revenue numbers are pretty close in what I've.
I just noticed and then, you know, it seemed like the trend lasted. And I guess it would, uh, just seemed like, you know, November, December are a little bit lower in collections or whatever than the other months or I guess some of the other months. So it's like it's going to be.
Well, yeah, you're all, you're all coming down. If you look at your graph on the very next page, you'll see that the peak time for you to generate city sales and use tax, just based on a graph, you've already passed that. You're, you're on the downside. The months of November and December's, uh, reflecting September and October's numbers tend to be lower. And so you're going to see an uptick in that due to the Christmas sales and the January numbers that will come in and February numbers where it seems to be, if you look on the left side of your graph, the highest. You see your February was like off the chart. So that's usually reflective or indicative of a good robust Christmas sales in the, in the month of December. So your biggest dip comes in the March and April period time. Easter doesn't generate a lot of sales. I'm wearing the Jan, February, uh, March area. So I, I'm not panicking. I think two percent is, uh, still very favorable to us. The city, I mean, the state just released their numbers. Their numbers are up. They said statewide for sales and use tax. And I think what we're looking at right now is while they're up, they're not up as much as our five-year average growth, but they're still up.
Any other questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you, sir. John's a little done as always. Uh, this time our agenda is agenda additions. I don't have as good news as I'd like to, but we have a couple additions. Uh, number seven, we need to sign a nonprofit contract renewal discussion. And then number eight, uh, Mr. Bailey, I don't know. I checked with you, but we need to get the approval of your news commissioner.
Oh, yes.
Waterway Service. We'll put that on as number eight.
Okay. I need to come up and tell you what it is or if you?
When we get to.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. If you're, if you're okay, say you have nothing else to do, so we sit back. We'll put that on as number eight. Everybody good with council's approval to make those additions. Okay. Uh, going right into old business planning department, Mr. Bell, ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities, third reading.
Mayor Council, uh, Jerry, uh, this is the third reading for the city council of Frank, uh, excuse me, for the small wireless facilities. This, uh, ordinance, uh, uh, regulates the, the construction, the design and excuse me, for both, uh, public and private properties for the city of Greenwood, for, uh, any of the, uh, small wireless facilities that come to Greenwood in the future.
Uh, I was working on, uh, the second page. On that subsection F. Okay. It's making a reference to subsection F below. I was wondering if that's a G. Just talking about the aesthetics and, and stuff of, uh.
I believe you're right. Make that change to section G.
And then on, uh, and then up there on, on D where you said the application fee, is it just going to be just a a hundred dollar period whether it's new installation or they're going to co-locate on a, an existing pole?
Uh, it would be on each, uh, each one, uh, just a new or existing pole.
Yeah. And I was, I was kind of confused when, you know, when you said together with the co-location of an associated wireless facility. So I didn't. But it, it is just going to be a hundred dollars whether it's new or, you know, an existing.
Exactly.
And I guess in E, then what does it mean there when you say a, a thousand dollars per wireless facility up to a total of ten thousand dollars?
That is the bond. Uh, it'll, they have to post the city bond and the amount of a thousand dollars per wireless facility up to a total of ten thousand. That's not for the permit. That's a bond.
No, but I mean, so is it, is, is every pole considered a, a facility or I mean, is it, uh?
No, it would be.
Like Verizon or?
Somebody come for Horizon, for example, comes in and that's, uh, that's who the, we put the bond in would be per pole.
Okay. So I guess then how's it determine whether it's going to be a thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars? Is it based on the size of the project or something?
Be the number of the, of poles that they're putting in.
So we need to take out per wireless facility of that on subsection E now three point three. Shopless City is going around a thousand per wireless facility.
I believe that there takes the cap off. Why are you capping it at ten thousand?
I don't understand. This is a, this is a ordinance that has been passed by multiple cities including Forestville, and we were just copying that order.
Well, that's what I'm kind of confused right there. I mean, if they're saying, you know, one thousand dollars, so if it's one company, we were saying over a thousand dollars, then if it's a bigger company, they're going to say ten thousand dollars? Or if it is kind of based on the number of poles that they're putting in, you know, the, the city? I'm, I'm kind of confused on exactly how do you determine that bond?
No, it refers to the, the state ordinance, uh, that, uh, regulates that in two cases there.
Do you, do you have that labeled?
The state ordinance, the state, no, I don't.
That might figure it out. Okay. I'm not sure what it's trying to do either.
Like I said, this, this has been been the, uh, accepted for ordinances.
It's just saying that wireless providers are going to get insurance, let the city know they got insurance, must submit group of coverage, get them in with five man per cars. They're going to post with the city a bond amount of a thousand dollars per wireless facility up to ten thousand for the purpose of standing, we said, to state statute. I wonder why other cities capped it at ten grand. So if somebody puts a hundred poles in, it's just ten thousand.
I don't know, Tim. Like I said, I, I.
I thought we planned it anyway. I wouldn't mind just taking the cap off and saying a thousand dollars per wireless facility. Because if somebody wants to put thirty in, or maybe twenty grand.
Again, that could be regulated by the state.
Yeah, they're required to do that.
Got you.
Are you looking for that?
No, this is a new regulation.
No, it's not the printed, the printed.
As long as we know it's thousand per wireless facility up to ten grand and, and not just one thousand per that company, every facility that's ever Horizon or Bill and Tom's internet service that whoever puts in is now the per pole of ten of them, I guess.
And I guess what I'm saying is that these small cells are, you know, are not going to be that big, you know, so uh, you know, so I guess the, the pole that put them in is a new installation, you know, is, is not going to be
And again, if they, you know, uh, we control the design of it at, you know, up there in an area that, uh, has underground wiring and we can, we can specify the, or we have to approve the design of what post they're going to put in there. Uh, like I said, it gives us the, the ability to regulate these, uh, these posts and, uh.
We actually have, Cheryl was able to pull up this, this one on the, on her computer. It's not in print yet, so we'll look at that and see. If it defines or gives a little more detail on the. Well, what I was wondering is, you know, how's that compare with like, uh, electric utility, whatever, you know, they're putting up poles and stuff. I mean, you know, the, or those, uh, Sweatville or Arkansas Valley, is there a cap at ten thousand, you know, if there's been a bunch of poles or?
I don't know that we charge them for putting in a pole. Uh, you know, planning department doesn't, uh, I guess it, you know, it's in there right of way in their, uh, utility easement, so.
Not a good time for a joke, though.
Okay, if bonding requirements cannot exceed one thousand dollars per small wireless facility, for wireless providers with multiple small wireless facilities, but then uh, within jurisdiction of the single authority, the total bond amount across all facilities paying on it's ten thousand dollars, which amount may be combined into a single bond issue? That's twenty, uh, three seventeen five sixteen. So they're, they're capping it by state statute. Pretty much if you want to cut a check, change range, please, maybe one.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to pass this ordinance for third reading by the title of the board.
We have a motion in second to pass by, to pass third reading by the title of the board.
What is the one correction to section?
Yeah, it's like.
F?
Another correction, do you?
No, section F.
It's, it, the only thing, yeah, it's just a minor, but on the property owner information on one of the forms. I mean, co-location on that page is, it's got two L's in instead of one L, you know, to be deal, but those are little new police. Pauline's, I don't know. On, it's the second property owner, property owner information. Down there in the.
You know what? I looked that up and, uh, because it kept appearing and it's weird, but it's, it's actually right. And I, I kept putting co-dash location, but that's, I think it's the proper spelling.
Network?
Right, so not, not two L's on it, just one L.
Well, I, I thought so too, but I think I looked it up. Look it up. We'll find out, we'll find out if it's right. It's an actual term, though.
Yes.
That is an actual word.
See, I told you.
It's correct.
I thought it was weird too.
The action of placing things side by side or in position.
I was like, oh, it's right.
There's one word, it's all one.
The habitual juxtaposition of a particular word with another word.
We learned something.
It, it's actually correct. And if two L's or one L, two.
Two.
If you reported just one L.
It's right.
According to.
How it is.
I guess I'm looking under, uh, the, the dictionary dot com, so it's, anyway, it's all right.
All right. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Rinker?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Lee Daniel?
Yes.
Chris Terry?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Mr. Bell.
An ordinance to establish standards for small wireless facilities in the city of Greenwood.
Great talk. Thank you. Uh, if, if council would allow, I would like to move up, uh, we have sheriff here at the city, Mr. Sheriff, Toby Ryan, not Mr., I guess you're still Mr. Two, though.
Hey, call care.
His events, yeah. Uh, to hear to discuss an item that's only agenda, write down number six. So with your approval, I'd like to move that up and allow him to get back on the job or wherever he needs to be. Or home.
Or home, something. Mayor Council, thank you for allowing me to speak to you. Uh, I, I continue with, uh, to explain this, this initiative that, uh, County Judge and I requested in the future on ownership, to myself. Because the reality is that the dispatch center, nine one one center is part of the sheriff's office. And, uh, giving us a little bit of history, I, I will be brief and I know that your time is valuable. Basically, uh, when the nine one one commission started, the idea was, was that they would pay for these dispatch centers. And, uh, it never really worked out that way. At one time they were paying up to forty percent of the salaries of the dispatches. And to give you an idea, we had nine one supervisors. We added one in two thousand and one. I went to the Corin Court last, uh, last year and told them, we're, we're all loaded and we need help. And, uh, quite honestly, the, uh, the funding and the revenue stream is really not there. Um, one of the things in doing some research, I found out was that, um, that even though there are a lot of counties that provide dispatch services, we're one of the few that does for seventeen fire departments and county cities. Uh, we are an anomaly. And as we've continued to get busier, uh, we just kind of did the best we could. And, um, it kind of came to a head when I was looking at some numbers. I believe that we all do have those, but with the current system we have, I can only go back and track to twenty fourteen. And, uh, in round numbers, we basically have had an increase from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen of about twenty percent. And that is in total radio calls, that's in, uh, non-emergency calls and nine one one. Uh, if you do have that in front, you can see our nine one one really spiked at two thousand sixteen and it has actually decreased, uh, since then.
That's the last page in the background sort of.
Oh, okay. So, so what I, I did a little bit more research and, uh, and I found out that quite honestly, there aren't many, you know, I'm not going to say any, there are very few, there are very, very few cities the size of your size that don't either contract out dispatching or have their own, which I'm not suggesting you should do that. We're an initiative with the state to decrease the number of nine one one centers. I believe there's eighty-five or something and they're trying to decrease that, uh, to do away with having, uh, for instance, Pitten County has six or seven. Crawford County has three. So what I, what I found out is that, uh, I won't go into a lot of, a lot of examples, but for instance, Harrison has a population of about twelve thousand. They're paying, uh, almost sixty thousand dollars contract for dispatching. Whitehall, Harrison, Harrison, Whitehall's about five thousand. They're paying more than what I'm asking. So what I'm, what I'm trying to do, and, uh, it would have been certainly easier just to try and go to the larger cities and the, uh, the, uh, class one cities, but I didn't feel that that would be an appropriate, uh, manner to do this because the reality is all the cities have an obligation. And, uh, you know, smaller cities, of course, can meet, uh, their obligations in a certain manner and, you know, Harley and Greenwood can in a certain manner. Uh, one thing I do, I do want to point out that, uh, this proposal does not have anything to do with nine one one emergency services. That hasn't brought up. You'd understand that that has nothing to do with that. We saw what could happen fairly recently when, um, nine one one goes bad. And we, we don't have to look too far back. And what I've run into is that I, quite honestly, there aren't enough people to, to feel like, uh, I can guarantee that we'll always have that level of service for emergency services, which we are morally, ethically, and legally obligated to provide. So I'm not coming to you saying, gosh, I gotta have this. I'm coming to you and I'm asking you as a city, and I am going to call the other cities. I felt like that was the, the proper manner of doing and saying, help us out here. We never ask any of the cities to, to donate or to pay. We've never asked any of the cities to donate or to pay anything for dispatch. When this came up about a month and a half ago, well, let's just say, I took a meeting in some areas, and I understand that, because this is not an awkward position. I got accused of requesting a tip for my services, which, you know, I really wasn't doing... But the point I do want to make is I'm not coming to you and saying, hey, I gotta have this, or I'm not going to be, I'm not going to provide the services the best way I can. But I will have to look at reducing certain services that I do provide, not removing emergency services. So, I don't know that this is a good time. You know, obviously, you're still dealing with your budget, and I know things are hard all over, but I would strongly encourage you, if you have a manner to do that, to partner with us. And I'm going to go to all the other cities and basically say the same thing, and ask them to help us out. I don't know of another agency that does dispatch, or the number of agencies that we do. Every time, you know, Greenwood's out of officers, or Harling, or La Vaca, that if they add, if they work from two to three, they increase the workload by one-third. We've never been able to add dispatches. So, I am, that's the gist of what I am asking. And certainly, as I said, I do appreciate your time and the allowing me to speak to you, and I'll answer any questions, if you can.
Sheriff, if you would, I think it's important to the council, if you, we had a meeting at the Benirian last week, I guess, or before that, with all of these mayors, and I brought backup for myself, brought both chiefs, because I know, I don't, we're all, we can discuss it and talk about it, and nobody knows better than those two gentlemen about this affects their departments for sure, and that's on the council, let them make a decision. And this is not, I hope, I'm not putting you on the spot too bad, the three things that you, I believe there were three main things that would not be available, and I don't mean for you to have to do this, I know this is not a threat from the county or anybody, but it's a fact that if...
Right.
That you're not participating, or anybody's not participating, what those three things are?
Well, what I looked at, and this is all up in the air, obviously, at this point, but one of the things that we do for all the cities is they all rotate their business lines forward to us whenever they go home at four or five, or whenever it is. So, we're answering 10 cities' business lines. And a lot of those, you know, could be, hey, I've got a water leak, or Suzie's bike is missing. A lot of those are called for service. Obviously, the fire departments aren't, because they're almost always emergency. The routine calls for service, all of the driver's license checks and the warrant checks, license plate checks are things that are considered non-emergency services that we provide for all the cities. When I say all of them, obviously, Milton doesn't have a police department, but we still have to service him, of course. It doesn't affect Greenwood in this manner very regularly, unless you have some sort of emergency. But the other cities, we answer all their calls regardless, and they might have a police officer that works 40 hours a week, and that's 168 hours a week. We, of course, answer that. And the bottom line is the non-corporate areas have to be the priority for non-emergency services, and that is something that could suffer going forward. I feel like the priority has to be emergency services. I have to know that I can provide those for the entire county. And if I can't, then I have to look at areas that I can cut back and still provide those, and that's what I'm looking at right now.
How, so how, explain how dispatch is funded? Is it funded solely by the form court?
Yes, except for, I mentioned that currently 20% of the salary of all dispatchers comes through the 911 commission. And it used to be 40%, but as that decreased, they had to cut that back, and then so the salaries increased from the general fund, from the form court.
Explain 911 commission, David.
A 911 commission, and I don't know the exact numbers, but essentially, when it was put in place, they thought we can charge a amount to every landline, every landline in the state, and that would go to the, back to the state, they would disperse it to the counties. So, with the decrease of that, it decreased dramatically. Now, recently, last year, we did pass a law that actually put that onto cell phones, and I believe, I think it was a dollar forty a month, but we really don't know what that's going to do. We do expect an increase, and these numbers that I am, that I'm asking for, these are taking out that 20% that's currently paid, and I don't mind telling you, if next year, let's say that things are going great, and it was 40%, then the intent would be that that would be backed out of whatever we ask the cities to pay.
So, 911 commission is fees that are placed on existing landlines and now cell lines?
Correct.
That turn around and come back to implement the 911 system in that location?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's 20%, and the other 80% is where?
Comes out of the general fund.
Out of the county's general fund?
Yes, sir.
Authorizes it?
Yes, sir.
And then fully funds it?
Yes, sir.
On, on section eight, it says that Sebastian County Intergovernmental Cooperation Council shall be responsible for reviewing the administration of this interlocal agreement. Who is the Sebastian County InterLocal Cooperation Council, and how are, oh, right here, it's on the second page.
Page four.
Yeah, page four, I'm sorry. And how are they appointed? Who are these guys?
So, the 911 commission, well, the interlocal council is essentially the mayors.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the mayors and the city, or the county judge. The 911 commission is the mayors, or, I'm sorry, it's not the mayors. It is the county judge, the Carl Gethkin from Fort Smith. They have the Fort Smith Fire Chief, you have a representative from the fire departments who made the rural areas, and I'm on it, and then you have the director of Fort Smith, E M S, Jim Herman, has an ex-official member.
Okay, but as far as this agreement, that's section eight, these guys are the ones that review the agreement?
Yes, sir. That would be the mayors.
And that would be the mayors, so we have representation for the agreement, because Doug Kinslow is sitting on the commission.
Yes, sir. And I believe they have a quarterly or every six month meeting, it depends on how much business they have. I'm new to this, sir, but I've been to two of them in the last two months, and those are the first two that I've been to.
So, on page five, this $27,948, that's just really an estimate, because you're saying that it's going to be based upon our populace, and our populace is going to go up, because it's higher now than it was in 2000.
Yes, sir. It is an estimate based on today, right now, and, yes, that number could go up or down depending on the dollars that come in from the 911 commission. Obviously, the census coming up, so that might not be good for the city. At the same time, all of La Vaca, I know their populations went up, but the dollars, you know, is that percentage, to give you an idea of most of the last 10 years, the county will give a 2% raise. That's normally what we get.
So, and that's mentioned in there, too, by the, for salary, you know, form court authorized salary benefits.
Yes, sir.
So, we're on the hook for that as well?
Yes, it goes on about 2% a year.
So, we're on the hook for our population increasing and for whatever salary increases the form court may decide to give these guys, then we're going to get it for that as well?
Yes, sir. That's actually correct, and the hope is that's offset somewhat by the 911.
And that would be an annual, and so, really, we're at the mercy of the form court deciding what our annual fee is going to be?
I think if you enter it into the agreement, there is some truth to that, and I don't think the intent is, I know the intent is not to say, hey, we've got this agreement, and stick it to you, because we're hoping that the numbers actually go down, and this is one thing that I did bring up. I've been there for 20 years, and I've been involved with law enforcement for 30. With the addition of technology, and which Greenwood recently came online, Harling, I'm hoping will, those requirements will not increase. This won't be something, in fact, I think I said in the meeting with the mayors, this is something that in our careers, we should not ever have to do again, and I do mean that. But yes, there is some fluctuation, I will say that the mayors do have a say, always, and because this isn't some sort of a tax or a bill, it is an agreement that the cities are in, hopefully, will enter into with us, and you can allow, if you have to.
But with this agreement, the form court, a little bit at the mercy of the form court, I still feel like the relationship is still, is y'all are providing the services, and we're a customer, and we really don't have that say-so, and what happens with the systems, how they get improved, how they expand, we just, I feel like we don't have much representation. We're just a customer, take the service, if you don't like service, then go away.
Customer grew up till now, has not paid anything for that service.
Right, and that's, and I agree with you, yes, sir.
But what, and I understand your concern, what would alleviate that? And I'm asking that, maybe this is a section?
Kind of a regional commission that oversees it, maybe a regional, that's all the little cities that include the people that are really involved in it on a day-to-day basis. Our chief and police chief of Greenwood, our chief and, you know, these are the guys that know what the troubles are, where the troubles are, and then the sheriff, definitely, the sheriff's department has the line of sheriff burden. You know, if you look at, one thing I didn't understand is, you're asking for us to pay $27,000, and you're asking Harling to pay less than half, and then the cost per service of Harling equal or more than Greenwood?
I think that that is a very valid point, and when we looked at different manners to make this, to make this proposition to the cities, we did it strictly by population.
And when I say that, based upon your figures for 2018, the costs per service of Greenwood were $10,130,000. The costs per service from Harling were $12,650. So, with that rationale, you're going to charge Greenwood twice as much as Harling. I'm in the service industry, and it's almost like, when I go to somebody's house up in Riley Farm, Tom Marsh lives in the direct Big Jack account, you know, I charge him just as much as, I charge him the same amount of price as I charge somebody over here living, just barely making ends meet. I don't differentiate. I feel like you're charging us more because we're just a bigger, larger wealthier community.
And that's not the intent, but you have to either grow, the population is probably lower constant than radio vocal services, which is what you were looking at, and, yeah, well, Harling did get involved with every initiative they could for seat belts or, you know, whatever, and that is why that was pushed so far up. And matter of fact, the last three times they did it, oh, I wouldn't do it unless they provided a dispatch, they have three tiny dispatches, and they actually sent someone in.
I think I'd jump on the bandwagon with Ron and that, I mean, I think, I mean, I'm all for this, the fact that if we are utilizing the service, we should pay our share, whatever that is. But it seems to me that we should pay for the service we use. I mean, I get it, I mean, I'm not throwing rocks at you about it.
No, I don't think you're listening to that, I appreciate you listening.
The population being perceived to be part of it, but I think you got to look at historical numbers. But the other thing that I don't, you know, when I look at this in particular, page five, you know, which I've had, what, five minutes to process all of this, but, you know, when, anytime I look at stuff like this and thinking about the years that many of us have set up here, and we look back at, you know, this document gets laid back on these desks five years from now, and there's all this talk about we need to hire two dispatchers, and it's based upon this 2019 salary of these two dispatchers and this benefit, and subject to future adjustments, and, you know what I mean? It's, it's about right now, you see, you understand what I'm saying? It's sort of short-sighted in my view of, I would rather see an agreement that says, we're providing a service to you, and we're going to charge you X based upon what you use. You could use that either by last year's numbers, last quarter's numbers. Budgetary-wise, Tom would probably rather see that last year's number, obviously, than last quarter, but you know what I'm saying? Instead of, I want to hire two people, because what if four years from now, I need to hire two more people? Somebody's going to pull this up and go, well, we already paid for you to hire two people, you know what I mean? I think that just clouds the issue, whether you need to hire two people or six, really isn't... That's up to this, whoever's running this operation, right? You know, it's, to me, it's a service. We're buying a service, and I think it should get presented as a service.
That gets back to what I think him, Mayor, I don't feel like we're a stakeholder in this agreement. And I don't think anyone feels like we're quite a stakeholder in this agreement, because we're at the mercy of, yeah, now it says two, but next year it may be four, and things grow, and they get bigger, but I feel like if we were more of a stakeholder, all the other cities in Sebastian County were stakeholders, we all had input and say-so and kind of run, I think it'd be more appealing. I do agree with you, you know, I'm also on the fire department, and I've also heard, you know, many times, they're going off saying, man, the dispatchers suck, I mean, it's just terrible, lock it up, you know? And I'm like, you need to shut up, because how much did these cost us? And I said, I don't know how they're paid for. Now, the reality is, maybe a bit deeper, you know, maybe when we passed the sales tax initiative back in the late 90s, maybe it was for partially for that, I don't know.
It was for public safety, the vast majority of that money that actually goes to the city of Fort Smith is the next highest amount going to the city of Greenwood. County actually receives, it was called a county sales tax, but the reality is, most of that went to the cities. The county receives more than, I believe, I believe Harling, but less than Greenwood, Fort Smith, of course.
Well, I think that, again, is, you know, things have changed, you know, and you said, I appreciate Ron asking clarification exactly how the 911s pay, and he said percent or whatever was assessed for each landline, and now landlines have decreased, you know, the cell phones have liberated or whatever, and I'm thinking, I know in the past, you know, I mean, particularly maybe one or two landlines, most times, probably just one per household. Now, if I look at, there's probably four or five cell phones per household, and I think, to me, it's not so much a thing that you come back and does, I think whatever they're looking at for cell phones, to me, they should extend that, whether it's a, doesn't matter if it's a landline or a cell phone, you know, whatever that fee was, it should be extended on that, and so, we're...
What do we know about, sorry to interrupt, the, what you're going to get on these cell phones?
I believe it, because I don't, we don't know yet, I don't know how long that'll take before we actually know. It was actually brought up briefly by the county judge at the meeting that the mayor referred to, and he said, we just don't know yet, we haven't got anything yet, and so, hopefully, and I don't know how they receive those checks, they go to the county, I honestly don't know whether it's, I don't believe it's monthly or quarterly, you know, from the state, so we just don't know what it's going to do.
I mean, when, I mean, it would seem to me, like Sweet said, I mean, if you're getting a fee from the cell phones, your revenue should increase.
Absolutely, that's what I said, the income should increase.
When did that, was that implemented?
Well, a lot just was passed last year, and I don't know if it's taken effect yet.
Last year?
It was passed, no, I'm sorry, it was passed this year, so it should go into effect, yeah. This next year, the legislature won't, they won't pass bills, it's every other year. So, it was this year that that was passed.
I know, I got a question.
Okay.
Y'all fill all the 911 calls, right? They all come to the sheriff's office, and they get distributed out?
Unless, depending on a tower that's hit by, you know, it's Fort Smith, and they transfer it to them.
So, so all the medical stuff comes to you, dispatch first, and then you transfer it out to Fort Smith B M S, correct?
Fort Smith B M S, correct, they actually, yeah, once they're transferred, then they...
And they actually do all the medical dispatching?
Once they're transferred to them, that's correct.
Right, so, so is there ever even been any consideration of taking those two dispatches and combining them? Because I'm sure y'all are having to fill all those medical calls, which I don't know if you ever took the time to figure out, I mean, it is, it's a bond. known if you ever took the time to figure out, I mean, it is, it's a bunch.
I don't know how many it is, no, but you're absolutely right.
You know what I'm saying, I mean, but you're, but you're having to fill those and they've got, they've got that dispatch to Fort Smith EMS. So, and I don't have any dispatchers, they got.
More than we do.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so is there ever, is there ever even been any consideration of combining the two to help maybe?
Yes, there has been, that has been talked about. And they're looking at a study to look at the 9-1-1 system. Actually Crawford County's pretty involved in it right now. You know, of course, Alma has their own dispatch and what they're looking at, I suspect when they come out with all these final numbers, Crawford County won't have three, what we call PSAPs, which is a primary, it's public safety answering, right? So, yes, it has been discussed. I think going forward, that's going to be the future. I do not know if it's not next year or the year after.
I just know, you know, that the EMS runs 24/7, 6/12, more out of county. And I know all the, all y'all filled all the 9-1-1 calls. It just, I don't know, it just seems like it would be kind of handy if you had somebody sitting there together, you know what I'm saying? Because then, then it's not tying this person up in my eyes, but that's, that's the way I look at it. You've got, you've got people that, because you're having to answer that call, it's redundant because you're having to take it, you're having to pass it over to somebody else, but it will be clear across town.
That's exactly what we do. And it has been talked about and I'm not sure how the funding would be. I, I think that, you know, one of the things that I've talked about is I feel like a unified dispatch needs to happen. I don't necessarily think we're going to need one here, but Fort Smith is such a large entity that they do, they do all, Fort Smith's all their own. But I think that in the future, that is what will happen. And there's, that will be, it's kind of above my pay grade, however, I have, I have brought that same discussion to the county judge.
Well, it just makes sense to me, I mean, I'm just, I'm just common sense, looking outside the box and kind of been around some of those, but it just seems like to me, if you got a call, 9-1-1 call come in and you've got these two different dispatches, but if they were sitting side by side, you've got somebody answering the law enforcement side of it, you've got somebody answering the fire side of it, you've got somebody, I mean, if it's up there, just abreast, you know, here.
That, that is how a unified dispatch would work.
Right.
And I think that that, you know, that was something, I don't know how that would work with a nonprofit.
Right.
Government entity, which is what we're dealing with. But no, same questions, those are very valid questions.
Because I, I've actually seen that, I've actually seen Fort Smith EMS dispatch room get pretty nice.
Oh, it's very nice.
It's the art is what it is. And that's, I mean, that's what I'm saying, it's just kind of a, for me, it just seems like it would be some way to maybe intertwine that and maybe help tuck the load off of you as far as having to, because I, I mean, I, I understand, I mean, I, I don't, I don't do nothing for free, I don't, I don't think we ought to get anything for free, but I just think there might be some different avenues on, you got any?
Those are long-term, yeah, long-term initiatives. And as I said, you're, you're out of money because you're saying the same thing I am, quite honestly, even if in the future, if it does, if the 9-1-1 commission increases, but for right now, I'm looking at, right now.
Sure, bring in, we were talking about that. That House Bill 1564 turned into Act 660 and it's passed in April, April 2nd of this year. It hasn't had a chance to go into effect yet, it wasn't effective in the year. We have no idea what revenue stream that may produce, so this may be a moot point. You may not need the money from us.
I, I don't expect, the numbers that I've been told, really, are not going to be enough that they were funded.
There are a lot of cell phones out there in the world, there are a lot of cell phones out there.
Yeah, but, you know, what did it say, did it say it's buck forty or buck fifty?
So it goes back to my point, if we pass this now, I don't feel like I'm a stakeholder that I have representation in on the decision-making power. I'm at the, I'm at the mercy of the form court saying, you know, we're getting a lot of money off those cell phones, but the cities just give us some money, let's go spend some money somewhere else.
And that, that money is somewhat restricted as to where it can go. I mean, it really is, and, and that won't be the case. I know you're not going to rely on the goodwill of the government, I, I understand that.
I'm, I'm in the government and I'm suspicious of government.
I understand that. I really wasn't interested in asking, I understand that, I do. And so what I would say, and I'll ask this body, because I need, I need help. I'm asking, what would be acceptable is I will go back and I'll talk to the county judge and I'll talk to the form court, if you're telling me I want to feel like I have some stake in it or, or.
I, I agree with your need and I've always agreed with your need. I just feel like we should be larger stakeholders in the decision-making power. That everything should be open and decisions are being made with these guys, these guys that we see every month, police chief, fire chief, that they're representing us as stakeholders and we know what's going on. And we have some decision-making power in what's going on as a stakeholder.
Are you talking about the finances or the actual operation of the, of the young folks? Because frankly, I don't know how I would give up the control of that. And not that I decided to control it, but I don't know how that would be possible as far as, as having input, certainly.
I would just feel more comfortable as a stakeholder, say, without it, in the fact that we had more control.
I mean, I, I, I go back to this again, you know, if you look, I guess the bottom of page three ended the top of page four, you know, for me, the purpose of interlocal agreement is to ensure adequate dispatch staff is funded to provide seven-day-a-week radio service instead of is funded to include two full-time dispatchers. You know, and then on the next page here, with the two new full-time dispatch positions supported annually for any increase in dollars of benefit approved by the form court, blah, 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 blah. You know, I don't want to get into how you run your business, any differently than, you're the sheriff, you hire deputies, you buy guns, you buy uniforms, right? I don't know what all that is, that's, you're the sheriff, that's your job. Same thing here.
Well, it's my fault probably because I wanted in a, in a, I wanted to be very open about what it was.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah.
So say, how with this money?
But for the long term, I mean, I don't think anybody disagrees with the concept, but I don't think this is there yet.
And so I will talk to the county judge and I, I think, I know you have other business, sorry, but I'm hearing what you're saying, you're saying you want some say. And what you want, it almost, you're saying, hey, tell me, this is what you're going to charge, I don't want to know the rest of it.
And then, but I think you take all of this into consideration. We, we want to have some level of control over what we're doing, I guess, here, I don't know. But I think Lance makes a very valid point that, you know, why would we, let's, don't try to fund this operation and have a separate one, if there's opportunities to do that, that'd be great.
I think it's great too.
You know? Let's pay for, let's pay for what we use, you know, not, I mean, just like our water bills, we pay for how much water goes through the meter, you know, same concept, you know? So.
I, if I may, I'm not disagreeing with you at all, I, I agree with what you're saying about necessarily needing all the details, but I don't think for a second, I'm just going to jump over there for just a second. I don't think that you came in with, without some details to the contract that we, and I include myself, would not turn around and ask you, what are you doing with it? I mean, is that fair too? I mean, I think, I think it's important, I mean, we, we ask that of, of our nonprofits that we, that we fund and to the detail, actually, you want to know how many bills the senior citizens are getting.
Well, and, and the other side of that coin is, don't paint yourself into a corner.
Right.
You know, if, if Stur comes to us and says, I need funding for, rest of that, he mustn't, he mustn't come to us and says, I need funding for two police officers, he's got funding for two police officers versus I need funding that's unrestricted, you know?
But we also, we also have to move stuff around and try to cut something else and take away money elsewhere to fund his two new officers.
Right.
Where I'm not sure what the form court's up to, but they haven't seen him try to find a reason around any money to help him out.
Well, they have, I got a, a part-time position last year is what they actually said with the intention of doing what we're doing now, which year going to the cities. And.
I mean, when we want to do positions in our police department, we have to, you know, just take the taxpayer dollars and do what we must with it. We don't get to go ask them to help pay for what the service will provide. And I mean, I, I guess the level I'm thinking on is, is not a good analogy as far as, I mean, everybody's paying county taxes too.
Which mostly, you know, mostly we're funded by property tax, which if you live in the city, you know where that goes. Well, thank you, can you tell me how?
That's good.
Yeah, oh, thank you, you're right, and, and as of now, as of now, we're paying $640,000 a year upfront to this, to this center, that does benefit everybody outside of the city for Fort Smith. So, I, I won't belabor it, but I hear what you're saying and I want to hear what you're saying. I'll go back and I will talk to the county judge and I will let him talk to the mayor and see if there is something that would be more acceptable to the city at this point in time.
I'm just wondering, Rod, I don't know if you have any specific what you mean about that, but it's not hiring and firing dispatchers, more about the radio equipment that's getting chose, I know y'all, we've heard that with all our, our services about some.
We, like us, we don't hire and fire people, but we do, we do have measures of control. Kind of original alliance of Lower Sebastian County that would come in and have say-so is more like what I'm referring to, where, state where I don't feel as much like a customer saying, here's your bill for $28,000 and it may be more next month and more next month and more ever add. And not having any say-so, not having any, not feeling like I'm, I am a stakeholder, but not feeling like I'm a stakeholder that has some, some say-so. I'm not saying that I want to be able to do what we shouldn't be doing and everybody probably works for him. And if they show up later, wherever, I mean, that's, that's him, he's the administrative part of this, I'm just saying that as a stakeholder, I would like to have some measure of knowing what's going on. And, and I know I fired a lot of questions at you and I, but I do want to say thank you for identifying the problem, stepping into the arena and trying to rectify and help and fix something. So I, I know, I don't want to come across as adversarial because I do agree with your problem.
I guess we're probably looking for more justification because the thing about it is we got people we have to answer, we're spending another $27,000 by this paper, taxpayers' money that aren't paying taxes. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's.
No, I, no, it's a very valid question, I've had people ask me that.
That's the thing, we're, we're, we're paying taxes and then we're going to come back and we're going to, we're going to take $27,000 more dollars of, of our money, taxpayer's money and, you know, divvy that again, so I think it's.
No, but that's valid, right, it really is, I'm, I've had to answer that question many times, and I do, you know, when I say that, it was never, you know, property taxes don't fund that. I'm sorry, they just don't and, and.
And it may be something that they have to look at kind of like they did for the ambulance, it may come back to the film title, that it's something that's, there's a, there's a given percentage or something just for the dispatch.
That's what, that's what the judge did the other day.
Yeah, I hate to do that because.
I understand, I'm going to say.
The tax thing just goes all over me and, you know, I was ready to go to the city council and say, look, this is, here's the numbers, this is what I need, this is what I have. And, and so I do understand that, you know, to go to a.
Sometimes, I mean, sometimes you get down to the point where it's just like, you know, kind of growing pains for us, I mean, we're starting with new revenue streams, I mean, right now, we're, we're growing links and, you know, stuff that we're going to, just mentioned, you know, Thomas said during today, we're, we're, we're looking for new revenue streams constantly, but sometimes they're just, I mean, it's not, I mean, I can say that part, but it just doesn't, you know, I mean.
Well, all, all of.
But the other thing that I feel is that, and you're going back to just the cell phone usage. I mean, I think that, you know, when somebody makes a 9-1-1 call, they don't ask, you know, well, how old are you or who's making the call? You know, and I really say that with the use of cell phones, that then more 9-1-1 calls make because, you know, anybody, you know, sees something that they make a 9-1-1 call.
Or something.
Right, and so, so there, yeah, I think it's really going back to, maybe to our legislators at the state level to say, you know, this is a situation now, you know, we're having an increased number of calls because everybody's got a cell phone now and, you know, what we need to do about that? And I think we need to go back to the, again, the 9-1-1, maybe the buck thirty is not enough. Maybe, you know, that needs to be a buck fifty or something like that.
I don't know that, you know, fund everything, it never, you know, it's not going to.
It never hasn't.
No, it never has. Most of the ever funded was not one time forty percent salary. I will, I will talk to, I'll talk to my people, get with your people.
Sheriff, Sheriff, you got exactly what you knew you were going to get.
Well, that's all right, I appreciate y'all listening.
But I'm, I'm impressed that you did not wear your wolf suit vest and there, I don't think you did. But these are good questions and, and they, a lot of these questions, so the council knows, are some of the same questions that were asked in the meeting last week by some of all those mayors. I'll tell you a question real quick that I had and a couple others of us did, didn't come up tonight. I asked immediately, what if Hackett Hartford, Mansfield doesn't participate, does that, does that amount spread out to the rest of us? And the answer was, I'll let you answer that question that I asked.
No, absolutely not, because I, I can't force anybody to do anything.
Right.
You know, I'm going to go to all the cities I've got, I've got another one this week too, next week, and I think six the following week, and I'm going to talk to all of them and then we'll see where we're at. And then my hope was I could get enough cities that would participate and I could turn that part-time position that the form court gave me, turn that money back into funding these, you know, the rest of it if we, if we did not, that's my hope.
And I think it's safe to say, obvious, I want to state the obvious, I guess, that Greenwood is the key player here.
And he's on Greenwood, he really does, you know, I have got commitments that I can't talk about it because I haven't met and voted on.
Well, I mean, there ain't nobody in this room going to argue with the fact that we hit the bargain. Because if we had to do our own.
It'd be $500,000 initially, probably $350,000.
That's what I'm saying, there's nobody going to argue that we're not getting the bargain, even if we, I don't know, you know, we get it worked out, we step up to plan and do our part, I mean, it's, it's still about far, it's like the most feasible route for us, you know, but it's just, I, I think we got a couple guys that are, you know.
And I don't know, you know, about the, my call, I don't mind looking at it, it was discussed, you know, we, we looked at that. It's hard, hard to know because of the hard numbers or the radio numbers, of course, we can separate out my number, but it's hard to know the online, you know, how many calls we get. It's not 450 a day, but I don't know where those are all coming from because they're all directed at our number and we don't see it, I'm going to Greenwood or bottom and go back. I'll do that and, hey, I do appreciate you for your listening. And I don't know, I hope we can come up with something because we need to do something and I feel like we're providing a service. I hate to be around here. Gary Grimes talked about this, Mike Gadsden talked about it, all of that talked about it. Well, the can landed right on my forehead, so, you know, it's time to address it. So thank you so much and I, I hope I didn't take up too much of your time, all right?
Appreciate it, thank you, Sheriff, appreciate you, sir. All right, moving on to the next item, this council franchise tax, where the council brought it to attention.
I want to just kind of bottom. I'm thinking about.
What I'd like, so if you look at, we passed an ordinance in July of '07 and I guess we come back and added electric and gas in August of '07, is that what we did? Do we clear some here? Was that, was that all brand new, your brand new, me and Lance or, so I guess we decided we left them out and we repealed them when we gone in and added telephone. The only thing I'd like to do is to go to the last page and.
Last page of the amendment, the only page of the.
And I'd like to bring it forward after December, but one thing I'd like. But one thing I'd like to do is go to section one and just, where it says all, let's see. The ordinance will affect all the utility cabinets. I'd strike out the exclusion of water and sanitation. That's the only thing I want to do.
Say that, man, please.
On the very last page, just take them together. There's an ordinance where it says zero seven dash eighteen.
Okay.
Section one, the last sentence.
You want to strike the last sentence?
I just want to strike the last sentence. I want to bring it after December meeting.
Put January in the bill?
Yeah. I want to bring it to.
Which ordinance?
I don't want it to affect the special election cabinet December.
So you want ordinance number zero seven dash eighteen on the January?
Yes.
Well, I think I'll do. I'll do a piece of all the others, utilities and the people.
That, that would make sense. You could buy them all, clean it up, strike that last sentence, I want it on the January meeting and then we can discuss further from there.
Okay.
Very good.
You do that?
And we, I guess if y'all look at seven twelve, you know, you know, what I'm trying to say here. You know, our, our wireless, our wireless companies, they, you know, public utilities, I guess what, you know, on that statement there it says, you know, that so charged to public utilities and cable companies.
You're picking up on the nine-one-one.
Well, I'm just saying that, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, nobody's got a line line.
Right, you know, but I mean, you know, I do see their, their folks out and around, they, you know, they're on our roads, they're having to go to, you know, towers and they're even having to go to homes and stuff, you know, I mean.
I'm certain you're fine with it, but I'm not sure state law would support it, you know.
I don't know, but I'll, I'll add a, add a pair here. I had called somebody for Fox Cable, I was very proud of them, they responded to talk to them. Angela, I think.
I didn't talk to her, but like they email me their changes and stuff all the time.
Yeah, I was interested, she wanted to, like, looking at it and she, she didn't see anything off the, she said she would make sure that we paid for the cable.
Now I don't know.
I'm not sure that she really said that, but in any event, she was very nice. I'm sure that if we had wireless, she wanted to correct what we're doing, she'll be getting the cable, she'll give news of it if she doesn't like it, so it's up to her. Okay, I see that on my cell phone.
Okay.
So I'd like to table that to the January meeting.
Okay. Very good. Number three is new business council impact fee discussion.
All right. I would like to table this and bring it forward and amend the fee schedule that's attached to ten thirteen.
I'm also, I've talked to Rod a little bit about this and I'm looking at the impact fee, just definitely available, implemented, and I think it's going to be a little bit more complicated than we originally had thought. I think the way I would be in tax, but I'm going to put something together for us to look at next meeting anyway to do this, but.
Do this for January also or you?
Whatever.
January meeting.
That's right. I'll have it ready for January.
Table that until January?
Yes.
Very good. Number four is Parks Department resolution to authorize purchase of land.
Resolution, what we're done, Parks Commission has voted to recede, look. About nineteen point four seven acres adjacent to the golf park. Includes a second road between the golf park and our park.
Where is this lane?
Going up to Jerry Collins' house, private garage, right beside the cemetery. From that road up, always, if you're on the road, everything to the right.
Everything to the right.
And this is funding that you currently have and.
It will come out of the Parks Commission's tax.
Except.
And it's in our budget for two thousand and twenty, not to exceed. And we're just looking for future growth, you know, could be ten years from now, fifteen years from now. You don't know how big the park is going to grow, but the facility will be there for all kinds of, this feature, not that.
The second entrance and exit is huge too.
We all have the money, so I'll make a motion if we adopt the resolution.
Okay. A motion in two seconds.
Thank you.
Adopt the resolution. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Maker?
Yes.
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 I think it's a wise choice for Parks Department then. That's awesome.
Right there, there was a duplex facility voting down.
It's on the other side. It's closed.
Right across the street from where this meeting.
Right. Okay, where are we?
Number five.
Number five, sorry. You're standing right there. Oh, Mr. Gillis, stand. Confirmation of Parks Commission member.
The Parks Commission met and confirmed Kay Hadley for another term as a Parks Commissioner. I get your attention and approval. She didn't pass the order.
I'd like a motion that we confirm Kay Hadley as a Parks Commission member. Second.
And a motion to second to confirm Kay, Mrs. Dr. Hadley as Parks Commissioner.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Maker?
Yes.
Yes.
We have, we now have one.
Tim Terry?
Yes.
Lance Terry?
Yes. We still have one open seat on it, Commissioner. At our next meeting, we asked members to bring together some names and we will vote on those names and come back to you with the next city council meeting. We'll let you know who you're voting on, if you approve, and then join the Parks Commission at their first meeting with the December third, two things.
Who's the vice?
Excuse me?
The vice, who did have them?
Mr. Chris, please. What you did right here is the year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We taking care of number seven already. We got the number eight, was added, approval of Commissioner to Water Waste Water Commission.
Water Waste Water Commission has confirmed the dead lane partner to be added in the city council criminal, Judge Parker's life loan system in Greenwood, former city attorney and retired judge, will be a, a member to be added to the commission.
Motion to say Judge Parker is Water Commission member.
We have a second before we have a first.
Yeah, that will do, that's a no brainer.
Of confirming, I guess, Judge Parker as a mission member of the Water Waste Water Commission.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ken Terry?
Yes.
He is.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Baylor. Number seven was a nonprofit. Oh, I'm sorry, skipped a little. I am so sorry. I was thinking, I confused everybody. It's my job to confuse those, and I do it well, do I not, Mr. Marshall? So now we're going back to number seven. Nonprofit contract renewal discussion, sorry, so sorry. I believe we can, did we get those to, to copies to these gentlemen? No?
I needed to.
I'm going to need six or seven.
Sorry, I did not know.
Sorry.
Nonprofit.
Oh, is that our age, ten, whatever?
Eight.
Eight. Twelve.
Nonprofit.
Here's your assistance, sir.
While you're getting the contract, I just want you to know that we have a seventy-five thousand dollar current commitment for the profits in the city of Green. Broke out between three nonprofits. First is the area agency aging at seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, nine thousand dollars a year. Second is the Sebastian County Boys and Girls Club, which is fifty-one thousand dollars a year or forty-two fish each per month. The amount is based on the lease contract that ends December thirty-first, both of these years. And last is the senior center, which is a fifteen thousand dollar annual commitment on the city of Greenwood for twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month. And that's just to provide the activity services and the senior center services by the organization that's provided to the seniors. It has nothing to do with the further commitments that we have established from the lease that we have the farmer's bank, which is a fourth item, which is expiring January thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. And that includes us to have to spend and make purchases in the amount or expenditures we have to pay for maintenance and repairs and utilities and they're billing us on a monthly basis for that. To date currently, we've spent fourteen thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars in maintenance and repairs and utilities for the senior center since we've been being billed for it. That breaks down between six thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars for utilities to date and seven thousand six hundred and twenty-one for nonprofit maintenance and repairs. Originally, we were budgeting a historical go-forward at twenty-five hundred, but we were not isolating how much was actually being spent until this year when I said we need to get a handle on exactly what the costs are so we can identify it for our contract negotiations coming up. So now you know the down and dirty on what the expenses are, I don't anticipate that the maintenance and repair costs, which by the way, a lot of that labor cost is done internally and it's not even figured into this. Those are just the cost of these supplies and materials as well as the direct cost for the utilities.
On that, if I'm correct or wrong, I wouldn't hear where that thing went down, but for us to give the fifteen thousand a year, we had to enter into the lease agreement.
Well, you had to have a place for them to have that service. So once you have a service, then you had to have a company come in and run.
Well, I thought it was similar to the boys club, we had to enter into a certain, we had to make a loophole there to give them money to nonprofit.
No, it was just a contract. It's just a contract for services.
What they came about is when they built the new farmer's bank building, they had the building, they, and the mayor at that time entered into the negotiation with farmer's bank to use that as a senior center. And that's where the lease came up and basically former local, the farmer's bank provided us the lease. It basically said that you're interested, take it or leave it, it will occur. And at that time decided to take it and after we took that, then we entered into the separate contract for the movement of services.
I'll have to say this, if we, if we don't renew the twenty-twenty contract that ends Jan, January thirty-first, if you said, if that doesn't get renewed, do we still have to or do we still need to?
You've got to have a place.
That's not.
If you don't have the lease, they kick you out. Where do you go?
Well, I, we don't kick them out, right?
We, we have to have, we're leasing the building and then we're, we're, we're contracting with a service to utilize it for that. So if you don't have the building, where are they going to have their services?
So here's my opinion of this for what it's worth. I was the lone no vote then and I am still against it. I've been against it from day one. My opinion is if farmer's bank wants to lease a building for a dollar, that's wonderful. They ought to lease a building for a dollar. And I don't think we ought to be involved in it. I don't think we should lease a building. I'm all for providing funding to the Sebastian retired, whatever it's called. I'm all for that, but I'm against us leasing a building for really no purpose whatsoever other than we've paid the taxes and insurance and maintenance on this thing all these years. If farmer's bank wants to lease a building for a dollar to the senior citizen center, that's a wonderful thing to do. They ought to do that. I don't know why we need to be the middle person. It never made any sense to me from day one that we were a middleman in it. We can continue, I mean, no differently than we give money to, to the Boys and Girls Club. It has nothing to do with leasing buildings or property, we just provide that to the Boys and Girls Club. I think we should do the same for the senior citizens.
Just out of curiosity.
We're not interested.
If we're leasing that building, is, is that building to be sold and used?
Restricted purpose, yes. It's in the lease. And that's fine, I don't have any problem with them restricting our ability to utilize that building. I have a problem with them dictating exactly how we're going to utilize the building. You're restricted for senior activity center and you have to pay this, you have to pay that, you have to do this, you have to cover all utilities, you have to cover the insurances on the property, which normally the person that owns the building covers that, not the person that's leasing it. Most of those utilities and so forth would be factored into our agreement with SRCA to cover some of their operating costs, but in this case, it's kind of written into the lease. You had four, I didn't, that fourteen thousand did not include the four thousand plus that we're spending on insurance on that building, but we do pay the insurance on that as well. So you're well over eighty, you're almost twenty thousand dollars just in the maintenance, utilities, insurance costs related.
It ain't getting any younger.
It ain't getting any younger and I bet you you paid that, if not more than that in previous years, you said no.
So total, what are we paying with the money that we give them?
You're paying fifteen thousand plus, you're paying about thirty-five thousand dollars right now, just in our ten months plus the year commitment on the.
Not including the utilities?
Including the utilities.
And I think that was never really stated, we always knew that we were paying more than just the contract, but we never knew exactly how much more we were.
Definitely, because back when there was a new city funded a roof or also.
We could air it, didn't you?
No, no, I'm, I'm, yeah, actually, we've done everything.
I already paid a dollar.
The dollar lease.
The dollar, the dollar lease. Basically, we're leasing a building that we're maintaining.
That's right.
That's, that's the bottom. I mean, if we could use that building and be able to recoup some of those expenses through like a, you know, special events, being like, much like we do with the children and center, I mean, that would be, it would be one thing, but if we're restricted to just using it for the senior citizens activities, that's amazing.
Item four.
Where's that, Tom?
Item four on the lease, lease to utilize the property for the purpose of a senior citizens activity center, all of the citizens are able to eat and socialize together.
Yeah, but it does say only, right? I'm being a lawyer here for just a second. And the reason I say that is.
Says, next page, real property will not be utilized for any other purpose except for hiring and setting up.
Right.
Restricted.
Without permission, because at one, because at one point, we were, when I was a Parks Director, we were visiting with them about utilizing that facility on their off nights for Boys and Girls Club satellite, after school program.
What'd they say?
I don't think it got past, I don't think it got past the council, to be honest with them, I'm a, I'm a student, I just don't think it got, it didn't get any.
Would it be nice to be able to use it?
Now, I'm not even saying that's possible.
Well, if you do, then you're going to have some nerve to scratch with some of your insurance because I'm using it for a purpose, it's not the time.
Well, sure, you have to.
So you're going to, I mean, you're putting yourself at risk.
Well, I'm only bringing that up to say that I know at one time that was a discussion and the SRCA did not turn it down, it just never got much steam behind it.
You can do what you want, you can give me the information.
Yeah, and I don't even know that that would be, when I, I don't even know that would be a wish on a wish list for Boys and Girls Club, to be honest with you, at the time, I thought it meant something.
At the time, I thought it meant something.
This is coming straight out of your general fund unrestricted monies. The SRCA does not get any funding from your county sales tax like the Boys Club does. Boys Club is funded solely by the county sales tax.
Where's this guy's money right there?
You know, he said, if you listen to the sheriff, he made a quote in, one of the things that he said had, had to deal with, there's no revenue stream for these new people that he's bringing on. Well, what he's doing is he's generating that revenue stream to us, and there is no revenue stream for us. How do we go back to the taxpayers and say, we got to make that up? If we're going to do a balanced budget, we're going to get hit with twenty-seven thousand dollars more, then we're going to have to cut something to balance the budget to make that. So you need to think about that because you're going back to the citizens saying, this is how we're going to use your money, and we're spending more than you're giving us.
On taxes you already paid to this guy.
Exactly. There's no revenue stream here either. You have no taxing ability to go.
We have to try to figure out how to fund our guys, and I as well, let's try to figure out how to fund the county guys.
Right.
We're on the core report.
I was going to take walks, man.
All right, somehow we got back to, yeah, we need to talk about this contract. Oops, sorry. So what, what's the question, though, of the contracts? Do you want to, did, I mean, the, the contract for services is a separate issue from the lease, the lease agreement? I think we all agree we don't want to lease a building. But we're okay with contract for services. I mean, you're talking about upcoming budget, are these the level of service we want to maintain?
Well, I think, yeah, I'd say that contract for services, it's a definite number, whereas the other one is, is kind of open-ended. It'd be rough if they, they're getting our condition even up, but like you said, the building's getting older.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if fifteen thousand dollars for the Senior Retired Citizens Association, I don't know what level of funding that provides them.
Dan, you got a bunch in your shop full of money?
Yeah.
Because that's where they're all going.
It's been plenty. I mean, I. It's been plenty when they, when they know we're going to pay the other thirty grand for all the repairs. I don't think that, I don't think that SRCA has been very good, as we know, about reporting to us and telling us what we're getting for that. Although I think we all probably know going into it that they're going to, they're going to buy bills and they're going to have a socialization place and they're going to do what they do. I mean, I don't know that we need a detailed monthly analysis of what did you do?
I think we did, I mean, we're, we're paying a fee.
I don't know that they can break it down, I guess, is what I'm saying. Maybe it's not practical, but, you know what I mean?
Well, we're telling the sheriff one thing, that you don't want it, you don't care.
Well, no, I mean, I, no, I want to know, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying that, I want to know. Don't come tell me I spent, you know, five dollars and sixty-three cents per bill on a, or, you know, whatever.
No, they give, we do get a report. It's not, it's, it's.
It's pretty bland.
Yeah, it's pretty bland. And, and I will say, and I said it earlier tonight, that they, they have not done, and I'll, it's, Lisa Moore's the director, and I don't want to throw her under the bus too much, but I guess I'm going to have to. She's not done a very good kind of reporting back. Deanna, right, Bryce, is a very, she is her boss, and when I speak to Deanna about it, she gets honored. In fact, she did today. She sent her email to me anyway and said, you've got to get over there and give these folks a report. And, and, yeah, it's a bunch of time. So, well, and Laura, and, and Lisa's not a, it scares her to death to walk into this room, I'll tell you that. And that's not a great excuse, but, but anybody can come up and give a report, but we're not, you're right.
Here's what, kind of what I was thinking, I mean, my thinking on this, which may be completely wrong, is when we were dealing with area agency.
Nine grand, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it seems to have, I mean, it.
We've crossed the ultimate sin of budgeting, where we gave you money, you didn't spend it, so you're done.
It's, it's tough for me as the mayor, even though I'm on board, and I've said that three times now.
Right.
But we're, this money's coming from us, and it needs to be used.
Well, I find it hard to believe that in Greenwood, that, uh, used, well, we're not being turned on, can that, the funds will be used to provide assistance with personal care, homemaking, my home repair, dentures, eyeglasses, medication, system, wheelchair ramps, shower chairs, et cetera. You haven't found, anybody in Greenwood?
I don't, I don't, that's just, and that's another thing, I would agree that surely to goodness, there are people in Greenwood that can utilize this. I don't know what the actual, I don't know how, how that process is going.
Like, they don't know that it's a vital.
I, well, now, area agency had an office here in this city, and due to funding issues, they, they basically had shut down and moved on, and they have one another little one, and then that pulls it down. I mean, they're still, they're still functioning, they have millions of dollars, they're not going bankrupt tomorrow. I said, that's, that's a quote. But, but, uh, so, I, I've asked the same question. I said, I asked how, how the citizens of Greenwood notify you? And they were basically asking them to come in. In fact, they told me they had people coming off the streets, or they did, when they were looking for purposes, or your building, where you're at. And now that they're not here, where do they go to ask? I mean, they probably don't know. So I would, I'm kind of halfway recommending what you just suggested. You know, with one, they still have nine thousand dollars to, and there's nothing, I mean, you don't have to get out of your contract, you can say, we're, we're changing the donation if you will, or whatever, or, seven fifty a month now, we don't, we don't have, I mean, we've had to change it.
It was, it was one year, just for the, not team.
Yeah, right, that's the word. Boiling on, sorry. When does this expire? January, I'll, January one, the.
Well, it's also do, we can go back and revisit if they spend all that money in two thousand and twenty, but hire back them in two thousand and twenty-one, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. I just want to make you aware that nine grand is kind of just suddenly, Jennifer will probably not be happy with me.
Probably not.
We need to be, she's actually going to be down here, is it this week? She's speaking at Focus on Greenwood Wednesday. I asked her to come down and talk to those folks about what goes on in there. So we'll catch you Wednesday.
I'd love for Tom to, to really, yes, meet with the area on agency, area on agent, agency, the SRCA, and the Boys and Girls Club, you know, to really look at their funding sources and just really, I think you can.
I would like to know that, too. What, what percentage of funding are we? I mean, I don't know if they'll tell us the whole thing. I guess it's probably not, but, uh.
I think there, if you go to United Money, you have to lay everything out, so.
If you like work about things, they don't give a load of anything, probably, anymore.
They cut back a lot, you know, like, uh.
So I think it's only, only right, so I think, uh, all go and, and look at it and then report back to us.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good plan, we'll do that. Any other thoughts or questions on that post-contract? Okay, we can get settled in the next round. We are, and our department reports and questions for council, fire, G R, planning, street, H R, and.
Is the lease change still here?
Yeah, he's kind of, he's kind of.
How much does it cost to, because of dispatch?
Five hundred thousand plus three hundred every. I, I'm not sure on calls because, as you know, on attorney, my council report, we may average thirty-six hundred calls a year, and that's taking into consideration self-generated calls and calls into the P D. So where that number comes from, that he says on that ten thousand something, I'm not sure where that's coming from.
Because Stewart doesn't have seven thousand. What constitutes a call?
Seven hundred and fifty last year.
Total?
Yeah.
Okay, yours is thirty-six hundred, so now we're at forty-five hundred. What was your skirt?
Seven hundred and fifty.
And he said ten thousand something. So.
Is that medical calls, though? Yeah.
But we're, so you don't, we're his number, so we're, we're one, right?
I'm not sure where that's coming from.
His ten thousand something.
Well, I mean, it's a nine-one-one call, but nothing may ever be dispatched from it, but they're still taking the call.
You got to remember that medical calls go in Sebastian County EMS, come in with our zip code still, even though they're not coming to us or to him, they're going through them as a Greenwood call.
He's including that.
Over, over to, has non-mercy, whether it's pink blood, or whether it's somebody sick at their house, and probably three or four.
My first impression of his numbers was it was like radio calls. Like, if you call, somebody on the radio called the dispatcher and asked them whatever.
If you call four-one-nine-nine-nine, he's going to go with that dispatch.
You call his, his officer, that'll go with the phone call, right? He'll go with the Sebastian County, so that counts as a call. Well, that's what I'm asking, is, is a call, a phone call, or a dispatch, uh, regular.
I don't know how else they'd be, come up with those numbers. I don't think they'd track how many times they key up in this Greenwood. And he didn't come out safe, but he told us in that meeting that if we didn't pay, then basically the one call officer would have the phones transferred to his phone instead of the sheriff's office like we do now.
I, again, I need to go back to, I mean, the C S U unit or whatever, we're kind of funding, you know, I mean, that's kind of going money going back to the, you know, to the county.
That's the core report, not kicking in, we come with money, so we have to help fund the counties, the cities of the county. Nobody helps us fund, we try to go with money for everyone.
I need to get the breakdown on tickets, because I'm pretty, you know, say we give out a two-hundred-dollar ticket, I think Greenwood may get fifty dollars from that.
Oh, yes.
Pay for state police retirement.
Jail fee.
We pay for a jail fee, which we still pay for jail fee, but it's some money.
It's, I have a lot like, like, it's less than fifty.
Chief, you got?
It's not going to affect our department at all.
Without it.
Well, like, agents for emergency, we'll have an emergency.
But you, but you can buy dispatch. I won't get into it, I, I, I asked that real nicely, because I tell you right now, it's what the county needs.
But no, it's not to give up control.
I think that's, that's what I was going, the sheriff's office does not even give up the control of that. And when you started, when you started asking about that, you, you were touching that spot of, oh, I'm gonna, oh.
If we all got together as communities, next thing you know, the right idea would be, why don't we just bring them all together and be lower Sebastian County Dispatch and do away with them, several dispatches, and be a unified dispatch.
Because another reason that, that I brought that up, too, is, is unified dispatch, and everybody has to work together, because we have no control on the maintenance of that dispatch system that is horrible. We can't even get out. I can go out there in my truck and get that six thousand dollar radio that the city has bought, and walk right out here, and I can't even get out of it. But then they're going to want us to pay twenty-seven thousand dollars plus the taxes we already paid. And, and I'm not too sure that they rolled in the, the Sebastian County EMS calls with ours, because it's, so we're paying for that, and we're paying the tax to support the EMS, and then our taxes on top of that. So we're really getting handed from that deal.
And our numbers should have went down on calls because, basically, we use the term, as he talked about, the fee for running tax, we do that on our computers, we're, we pay that fee. Now, if the computer's down, technology, they may still do that, but it's a very small percentage for us.
You never, you never mentioned, I asked for the three reasons, the three things, and you may remember, you guys who were there, he said three, he listed three things that we would not get, that we didn't cooperate, participate, cooperate's the wrong term.
Well, of course, we're a county seat, we're going to have to cooperate.
And one of them was what he mentioned, and the other two, as I listened to them up there, and again, I had those guys there to rely on for the real decision, I mean, they lived every day, I'm thinking, I don't know, I don't know a little what, what they do for us, but I don't, I thought to myself, I'm not sure the combination of those non-emergency issues, if they are, are as worth twenty-nine thousand dollars.
No, one of them was to enter stuff in Nancy capacity, which we do ourselves anyway. He asked, and I have to say it for a game here.
Yeah. So it was a generic answer for all the community, the towns that were there, not all mayors that were there, but most of them. And so you know, the unified dispatch subject is after the meeting's over, every mayor around, that's going around and having side meetings are suggesting the same thing.
Like us.
Exactly.
Well, I was going to, I wanted to ask him how much aid that our fire police give his guys outside of the city limits, because we could send him a bill for about seven hundred hours.
And he touched on that a little bit at the meeting, I mean, he said that we, I don't know how much they help us, I'm sure he did.
We're going to find lost people, we got shootings, floodwater rescue.
I will, let me say this, too, officially, and I won't tell you, we'll have to figure it out, we're getting another quote on dispatch also, so I'm waiting to hear back.
I feel like that they're pulling the same thing they did in two thousand eight, when they came in here and we had to go borrow the money to outfit our police department, they put about a hundred and sixty, seventy thousand dollars to outfit all the further because they said, this is, this is what we're going to on November the twenty-second, to be exact. Y'all can either be on board, because we're going to flip the switch.
Or you have no communication.
Or you have no communication, so, you know, what do you do? I mean, it's just kind of how I feel like this is, I mean, it's almost like, well, we don't, if y'all don't pay up this money, we're just going to cut y'all. Well, that ain't going to work.
We're stakeholders, how do you say so?
It'll be interesting to hear what they come back with.
We had a, we're Sebastian County, you can buy dispatch, maybe we can do away with the redundancy in dispatch and put paying for two government assistance.
I know a little bit how the medical dispatch works up there, I know a little insight on that. And so that's what, that's why I brought it up, because I'm telling you, they got a state-of-the-art dispatch room. I mean, it's not, it's not what's up at the sheriff's office.
Oh, I, but that's the one you're talking about.
Yeah, it was with EMS. It's incredible.
Lance, what was the old West Art?
That's what's been nice.
What's what's been nice?
They got a nice facility.
Yes, it's very nice, and, and I can tell you that there's a lot of higher negotiations is the problem on, on some of that stuff, and you guys and people that are in those positions, you know, and, you know, we're, but, but they don't want to give up the reins. And, uh. The, I talked to the sheriff about it fifteen minutes ago, had to clear out the, they suck comments.
Yeah.
Anyway, who knows? But anyway, he is for unified dispatch. He understands the hurdles he's going to have to get through. I think he is, he's the main person that can make that happen. But then they have to get the West Art or Fort Smith EMS to do, and really, it's not their choice. The choice comes under the nine-one-one board, and where those nine-one-one calls go to, with the new wallet comes into place, we may all have to give the Fort Smith and Sebastian County, but I think they're going to allow some of the larger counties to have more than one point. And so one will be Fort Smith's, which is huge, and then Sebastian County. We, as in the fire, the police, the fire departments in the county are the third stepchild to the county, because you got mainly the sheriff's office, police first, then everything goes over to EMS, and then, oh, by the way, we do have a fire channel over there, and we can turn up and down, listen to what we want, and that's not how it should work. When I talked to someone from another dispatch, they said, you don't have a person that's one hundred percent fire, that's on that all the time? And I said, absolutely not. And they said, how do you work? And so, but I think, I think he is on board on that. He got elected being on board with that. When we elected him, we talked about that. And I think it has to do with the powers that be being pushed to make that happen. There is a room over at the Emergency Operations Center that was built specifically, the, the dispatch center over at the old Armory. It used to be across from Jeff Turner's office, now it's from across from Kendall Dean's. And the mayor sat in it, there in the big, uh, wallet, and that was designed to be a dispatch office, because my dad was the guy running the contractor for shears on that. And it was all designed to be the main system up and backup to the current system, and they've never put any investment into it. Our biggest problem out here is the tower. We brought that, or I brought that up to David and Joe, if you didn't want to have that discussion, because that's a million-dollar discussion for new tower. Most cities are having to pay that, whether the counties have it or not, all the north west Arkansas cities are, are having to pay for extra towers in their area, because A-Win will not put another one in for the state on their own dime. And the county doesn't have it, so they're good for us. The thing is, the county's not only using it, and we're not only using it, state police is using it, forestry's using it, all these other agencies in the state are using those same A-Win towers, why should we have to win for their A-Win? Uh, all these other agencies in the state are using the same A-Win towers, why should we have to put an A-Win tower in the county just for City Green? Uh, it should be cost sharing.
Yeah.
Uh, same, same one, that's where you'd have to have some type of nine one one board, and we have a nine one one board in the county. But you would think they'd have more authority to take care of unified dispatch and everything, but the board's there, actually, we don't have, I'm guessing, anything to say on it, but, you know.
Well, he brought it off some board that somebody asked him about.
He's talking about, and, and it is the mayor, he's talking about the, what you're talking about.
Council or.
Well, I wonder, when he brought off guys that were, forested people, they're not even involved in this.
That's, yeah, that's not what I'm on, that's the, whatever he was talking about.
Interagency.
What are you talking about, the nine one one?
Nine one one.
I guess that's what, that's not what it said on that contract, I wasn't saying that, I had some big old long intercollective.
Grand interagency.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I asked.
Like, you know.
Yeah, that's the one.
I wanted to know who, who.
He brought off some guy that was a forested team, somebody.
Yeah, they changed, that's the nine one one board.
Okay.
He's talking about two, two, one that the mayors are on, which is, and then this other one.
But to me, like, the uncle talking about, he said that the nine one one fees are always constituted by twenty percent of the, uh, dispatching persons, whatever. Yet, on these new ones, he's wanting, he's wanting to flip that and saying, okay, he wants the, the cities to pick up eighty percent, because it's overrun a shortfall on nine one one.
Well, that was on landlines originally, and landlines have gone so far away since nobody has a phone to call them.
Right, but, I mean, even if, even if, uh, if it was that late, it's still saying that they're only providing twenty percent, uh, you know, the, the, anytime they get official people, for saying that the county's always gonna provide eighty percent nine one one fee, they're gonna be twenty percent. But now he's flipping it and saying, no, we want you all to provide eighty percent, you know, you know, of this fee, because there's a shortfall in the nine one one fees.
If he'd come in here and said, you'll give us fifteen grand a year for this, with the price of gas, you're like, I don't wanna hear about all this percentage junk and wheel and war, but if he'd asked, like you said, it's a free service, we're gonna give him. But come here with all this shaking your fist at us, we're gonna cut your stuff behind that.
Look, like he's saying, he's, he's, he's looking for revenue sources, I said, hey, bro, I'm looking for revenue sources.
I think that the tax patch for the county back in the nineties was for emergency services. And I think you should throw that back and say, you need to live within your means, that man needs, you need to cut out the parties and the cake and, I don't know. But live within your means, 'cause that's what we're actually doing.
We're fixing to do our part in session time.
You know, you've got a, you've got some money that was for a specific purpose, my chair's being used for that purpose, and live within your means. Well, they're out, I'm from our center, open at oppositions, one of them was a training officer, so if they're being the oppositions, the money's gotta come from somewhere, obviously.
I think they already did that last week.
I think that's already been done.
Still got a ton.
They were, they were part of non- A-Wins and a training officer they had.
Not a dispatch, was it a resident? Or maybe it is one. It has been missed a couple times, but I'm, I'm, it's been kinda pointed out, but it was a big deal that a year ago or two years ago, whenever it happened, they had to hire, have a, what's, what's the person in charge of dispatch, whatever it is.
Dispressor.
No, well, that was the point they made, it's a supervisor, but the supervisor has, evidently has had to dispatch everyone once in a while, I think it, okay.
They, they can't keep anyone in there.
I'm a part director, I'm a, I'm a.
Truck dispatcher, I'm a dispatcher.
Did that's the Richie Moore run the ticket?
No, that I can't.
Same deal. Chief.
We have Chief Mansfield here, do you have any thoughts and, and or?
Well, I know.
Mansfield's not voted one way, right, the mayor was there, he said he had voted, but he, but I, I'm sorry, asking question, he did say to us, to the judge, they had not voted, but it didn't look good.
That is correct. They're asking Mansfield to pay a little over twenty three hundred for four hundred and ninety-three people. Half our town is.
Scott.
Scott County, we get dispatch from Scott County, so if they stop utilizing, you know, facilitating our needs, we can always go to Scott County. Because we pay a one percent tax for that, for the Scott County folks.
They could probably do too, in Sebastian, it's not allocated properly.
Well, that's what I'm, what you're saying to me right now, and he's winning.
Yeah.
But then again, they don't charge us for license to run tags or to run driver's license and check for local warrants, they don't charge us for that.
Scott County or Sebastian?
Sebastian, our Scott.
Right.
Now, the only thing Sebastian charges us is a twenty dollar booking fee, if we bring an individual in under arrest, and they have to state that it's a twenty dollar booking fee that they do charge us. Scott County don't, because of that one percent settlement.
I think it is officially voted no on this, I don't know about any of the rest of them, I think we're waiting for the sheriff to come and talk to them.
In those things he's talking about, like I said, we run ours on our computer.
Yeah, right, and we don't have that luxury.
Like Ron was saying though, I mean, back there in late nineties or whatever, we, they came to us and said, we want y'all to give up the dollars, one percent, give it to the county, you know, and we did that. And, uh, you know, you think of what that's generated, where, you know, it was coming to Greenwood, you know, it's now going to the county, so I think we, in some ways, been more than cooperative.
Chief, do you know how, so Northwest Arkansas is grown wide, cities are grown, counties are shrunk, how are they dealing with their dispatch, do you want to y'all know? Is it a big patchwork dispatch system, or they have some unified dispatch?
It is right now, Northwest, uh, I'm active with the medical chief association, that's based in Northwest Arkansas, and they allow Sebastian County to attend, and, uh, basically, they have all the different, they have two different, they're having to figure out how they're gonna do consolidation up there also. But I will say, the cities are all paying, like their towers, uh, I talked to Chief Irwin a couple weeks ago about their A-Win towers, they're having to put in. They're just not joining the A-Win system, this is new to Northwest Arkansas, they've been on the old systems with one A-Win for each department, they didn't require everybody to do it, now they're all doing it, and seeing all the bumps in the road. But, uh, I think Springville's putting in either four or five, uh, different A-Win locations, but they're putting them on like the top of the hospital, and he said that's the ones there are about, almost half a million to put that up, the regular tower's about a million dollars. And they're having to put four or five of them in to run the system just there, I think, uh, they have a little area that very much coupled with its county seat, and, uh, but they're all having to go through the hurdles of starting the A-Win system, putting towers in, because A-Win's not putting any more towers in, the state's not putting any more towers in. They don't have money to do that.
So you mentioned, you mentioned several entities, we'll go with Ralph's down here that uses it all the time, that's about all, just a game of fish.
Well, you got, uh, all the channels on there, you got, uh, uh, there's a channel for forestry, there's a channel for, uh, whether it's a game of fish, there's a channel for, uh, the Greenwood Public Works on there was, and, so if you have all these different public works and everything using it, and, and right now, they're worried about closing up the system. I mean, the last thing he wants is to go buy bucks A-Win ready for some of the guys.
I'm just trying to spread the cost on that tower, but if you mention to Greenwood, that's, never mind.
Well, and that's what the county says, it's why should we buy a tower for the center part of the county for us in Greenwood, when the state police is using it and all those other agencies, and so, that's what I get every time I talk to.
Two, two hundred thousand dollar piece from everybody to put a tower up.
Yeah, but, you know, Mansfield, yeah, to, now, so, I don't know if it has hundreds.
No, yeah, well, no, I don't mean to say it's any of them.
Well, I was saying, that would be great, but we would be the principal and all that.
I think we went right in from reports and questions from council to council forum, that's, that's good.
Well, no, we still.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Y'all think it's public words, I was gonna talk to him straight then.
Absolutely, there is.
I guess the word has gotten out about my reputation with traffic signals, because everybody calls me with their complaints.
I haven't heard that.
But, uh, the one, I'm, I'm assuming you've heard plenty from the seventy-one Denver street, mountainside, completely scattered rain. I've got, I've fielded multiple calls.
I keep hearing complaints about that, but I'm not.
They, what had happened, uh, lightning had struck the, the, uh, lights, aluminum lights up there, illuminated lights up there, and it tripped that. And what was happening is, uh, I drive Arkansas, was getting a lot of those calls, Chad Davis called me the other day and said, I'm getting these calls, and we went over there, it had tripped, yes.
It was just going through each spot where there was car there, and I just make the search.
But it was, it's on total recall.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's, and that's what it does, when it lands that fall, that's what it, it reverts back to.
I didn't warn it, I never called it, I was going to do buttons.
I went over there the other day, and it worked perfect, everything was working perfectly, and we had a residual call on that I drive Arkansas that had been old, and another fella called me and said, can you go check it? And I really did, and I checked it for thirty minutes, everything was perfect.
I had a guy that's sworn and spurs up and down, nothing's changed, you've probably got the same call, I'm the same as cops.
I didn't give nothing to sport.
Bucky.
Yeah, I was, I was that judge.
I thought Bucky was sworn, and he doesn't, you know, there's a little square here, a little bit, but nothing's changed, you don't wanna do it, still do the same thing, so.
I drive through it every day, it's never, I've never had it, really, never done it.
When you say you drive through it?
I drive through it, I don't shop.
That's regular day.
I use it quite a bit, and I had any problems with it.
I, I'm the same way, but I just.
Cause I, I live where I, Denver's my bypass, my bypass on traffic from Denver and.
I go through it, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with it, I mean, I, I just might be a flinch as to what it's, what it's doing, I'm pretty patient.
I have a question about cats. I did, I did a, I got a call about this, about all the cats that live down there at the Bulldog Auto parking lot.
There's a few of them.
Hell, what?
Cats.
Cats?
Word Bulldog Auto.
It's not street.
No, no, no.
It's about cats.
Oh, shit.
I wish it got a phone.
I mean, what's up with that?
We're feeding them, I have no idea.
Feral cats.
I think so.
It doesn't matter, we pick one.
We don't pick cats up at all? What?
We don't buy bulldogs at all.
I can't, pick up the cats, pick them up.
Anything else for the department?
I was just.
I don't pick up.
You don't pick up, yeah, mountain cats, right?
We haul them up.
Anything else for the department?
One we do.
Gentlemen? It's not for the, you'd ask them, I'm sure.
Yeah, just, just a reminder, Lonnie Meeker.
Yeah, I've got him on the list, go ahead, go ahead.
It's, uh, it's his uncle, so, but anyway, the fire department is gonna be taking part in that funeral and just like, I don't know, we're proud of the service, make mention of, uh, A-Win S.
Absolutely, I had that on my first, wrapping up, and the funeral is Wednesday at one, family visitation of ladies tomorrow night, or all day tomorrow, but I mean, five to seven, that I wrote, man, Lonnie came to replace Lonnie Meeker, that's for sure, so. Uh, we're closing, I'm closing city hall for the funeral, for the city, and all the employees to go.
Oh, let's change the subject to next month's meeting, what's the story, what's hard to bring, stuff you want to do?
December, it's actually been moved to December the.
Eighth or ninth?
Ninth.
Okay.
That's correct, and we're kinda taking a poll, and, and I know you got, while y'all are firing, you're doing other things, but we're at the city, as of now, for, we're pretty sure we're gonna get a float for all city employees and their families to rally on if wish, and council, whatever that may be, or more walking to be on that float.
We're at the home, that's one, you never.
Oh, yeah, uh, so, city, city elected officials and employees, we'll curfew, we'll, uh, we'll meet upstairs sometime, but, okay, more, anything else, you gentlemen? I've got, uh, a reminder, our town hall meetings, it's, that's the street park, and they supply the sign out here, but everybody.
Any councilman at the last time?
I believe there was one councilman, I can't remember exactly who that, oh, was, was it you, Mr. McVeen? Uh, I, yes, the next one is November the nineteenth, again, here at six o'clock, I would encourage any councilmen that can come to those, to please come, we had a pretty good crowd, I mean, I was kinda pleasantly surprised, there was probably twenty-five people here, obviously several of our own folks, but there were some folks here that I didn't expect, and, and it was some good, we, I gave my, as, as Tom calls it, my political speech regarding the issue, and then Tom gives the facts of how it's to be paid for, and how we're, and all of that information. Very informative, I saw comments on Facebook that they appreciated it, and they walked away with a lot more information than they ever, that they had before, uh, so.
I heard probably comments from students at Greenwood Hospital too, about school.
This morning? So, on that note, thank you for this, I, I, as I do every year, I'm invited to each one elementary to go out and talk to seven kindergarten classes, as Uncle Sam, because they have a special election every year, what they do is, and it's tomorrow, so what they vote on every year is their snacks that they will have. And so I went out and talked to them about how elections work and why you should be aware of what you're voting for, and their candidates, just so you know, that they're, that they're voting are, are cheeses, skittles, and, uh.
Oreos.
Oreo, Oreos, and so, had to make them aware of that, and we talked a lot and had a good time, and, and I went from there, I almost went directly from there to the high school in my cap, in my Uncle Sam costume, but I didn't. And, uh, but I met, went on change, and I went to, uh, the scene, to the student union, and with Bob Purvis, chamber director, Sharon, um, Brooks, Sharon Brooks, excuse me, was there with the county and, and her assistant, and we actually, I say we, uh, several, several students had already registered to vote. We weren't there to tell them how to vote, we were there to make sure that they were aware of the special election and to get everybody registered that we could, a lot of, a lot of those kids had already had their registration card, and I think I talked to Sharon this afternoon, and they registered around a hundred kids out of those three hundred. Because, I mean, they're not all gonna turn eighteen by either December the tenth or March, whatever the election is in March, so, yeah, it's a good, really good, and then up there's, uh, we thought we were gonna have about ten, and then, by principle, Shout Radio and said, seniors are supposed to be here, so, about, I don't know how many there are, three hundred. So, I'm not sure I was not, I gave the same jokes to the kindergartners that I did to the seniors, and I think I did better at the kindergarten class, but, you know, uh, I'm sure I did.
If you were doing that on Instagram, you might have got some of the seniors involved.
Yeah, there you go, absolutely, I did, so we did, we, there was a lot of, uh, voters being taken, that's pretty cool, so, uh, again, that meeting's November nineteenth, please come if you can, uh, you don't have to, just kind of support, uh, things are going well, uh, here, uh, Greg Cross told me yesterday, and then told the guys this morning at our meeting, that, of course, there's continued survey all over town for this traffic relief. A gentleman that was out in front of his office, according to Greg, we're getting closer and closer to his building, that's all I need, I'd say, it's very, very packed up, and we've got, uh, the guy that was there told me that he was a two-year man, it's when he's on the job survey, you're looking at two years to be driving on a road, so, uh, we'll see, and, uh, so that's the update on that. That's all I have on my notes, if you have anything else you'd like to discuss. If not.
I'll make more to win, thank you.
Try to take a sec, you're done, thank you.